August meeting to order disclosure pecuniary interest and the general nature thereof. See any approval or amendments of meeting agenda be it resolved that council approved the agenda of the committee of the whole beating date of July the fifth twenty twenty two as presented and mover in the second please Matt and Doug. Any discussion, any amendments? All in favor? Terry. Approval of minutes be a result that council approved following minutes as presented regular meeting of council June twenty first twenty twenty two. A mover in the second please. Joe and Pat. Any discussions, any corrections? All in favor? Thank you, Terry. I need no business arising from the minutes. Inquirers, members of the general public. See any? No delegations and presentations. Item eight, business arising from the delegations and presentations or isn't it? Item nine, staff and committee reports nine point one public works June report.
Um, so I'll go over some of the major projects we've been working on uh and some of the major items. Uh underwater plant distribution back on June twentieth Victor will go from on to contact me. Inform me that they are having an issue with UV one and that it is down their instrumentation tech. And some troubleshooting on the over the phone with Trojan. They were unable to repair the issue. So Victor asked me to contact Trojan to have a one of their operators on site. So right now I'm working with Trojan to get um a service scheduled. Right now I'm not sure when that's gonna happen. UV two is operational, but it's still operational. So it's pretty getting urgent. Um, under capital projects, Demora has completed work on the prospect of paving and sidewalk replacement. They pour in the sidewalk in two sections as to allow the resident at Crystal Vault access because it's the the front is the only access for them. They paved the area where we dug with a fifty millimeter lift, then they milled the the whole stretch from almost where the fire hydrant is on the corner. They know that with another forty millimeter lift on top. We provided the curb stop in the sidewalk to level it with the new concrete. Um, I've contacted Demora and given the go ahead and paved the areas that were approved in the budget. At this time, I'm still waiting for them to schedule us in. Um, I've contacted ESP to provide some engineering on the Ruby Street sewer replacement project. And I have currently reaching out to contractors to quote on the preservation of heritage site project. I've had one call come back so far. I'm not having a lot of luck. Not getting much interest in uh from contractors right now. So I'll keep trying. Under public works, Demora has also completed the work on grand you have paving and saddle placement, the water break we had. Spring, a new curb was installed first followed by fifty millimeter patch where the wireline was replaced. The sidewalk was poured on June sixteenth and public works returned. We did the landscaping and planted new grass for the resident. Um. One, two. Um, under buildings, Brian Mercy is going to take over my former role checking the extinguishers and all the safety equipment in each US building. Um, on June twentieth, true steel security installed new cameras at the Fraser. There'll there's two on the south side of the building that monitor both emergency exits. And a camera on the inside to monitor the entrance to the common area and the elevator area. And they've also updated the FOB system. The previous version was obsolete and we couldn't update it anymore. The so upcoming, we had we had hydrant flushing scheduled actually to start today. But with the water plant with the UVs, one being down, we decided to hold off on that just in case. So that'll start as soon as we get that fixed. And our shop construction timeline on June sixteenth, Lickup Electric arrived and began installing of electrical components there. They've completed their portion except for the hydro hookup itself to the pole. We were getting a locate right now. It's taking a little longer than normal. So we did get the locate. We didn't dig the trench. Now we're just waiting for hydro to come back to the hookup. Um, we removed the old fence in front of the new shop. And I've contacted Peterson and asked if they had an estimate on when they'll be here to install the water line. He has to coordinate with the gas company because they're crossing a major gas main. So they have to be on site for the operation. So he gave me an idea. He's hoping it'll be done by the end of July somewhere in the next few weeks. And Menards has installed windows on the garage door. So that's where we stand right now with the garage and any other questions on anything else?
Anybody go ahead, Joe? Go back to your UV lighting. You got a backup plan since we just have one?
Yeah, so there's two UVs. Basically for redundancy purposes. So right now we're running off UV two. So it's running.
You have no backup plan in case that one goes down?
The backup. So yeah, the two UVs, that's that's your redundancy. So yeah, so that's why it's urgent to get it back online.
All right. My next question I got for you is under buildings. There's one line in your report I'm not too keen on with that. It says I will provide training to him when time permits.
Yeah.
There should be no time permits.
It's been completed. The we have the month to to inspect the buildings. So when I had time, you know what I mean?
No, it's just the training part.
Exactly. It's just basically it's it's showing where all the extinguishers are and all the safety.
So it's done?
It's done. Thanks. And July's checks have done. He actually did them today.
Yeah, thanks. Anyone else have any questions of the public works open? Well, you're doing a great job as far as I'm concerned. I can see grass being cut where it hasn't been cut in some time and I think that's bonus started with the town. That makes it look much, much better.
Oh, also I should mention, sorry, I forgot. Our students started yesterday. Um, they did training with Coleman Township students, a day with Jerry McGarry there. So today we had them start some workout about obviously they weren't cutting grass for the rain, but tomorrow I hope to get them on grass. Sorry.
Okay, we've got a bunch of railings to paint, do we?
Yes, that is on our um our upcoming. Our focus is going to be grass brush. Getting our railways painted and railings.
It'd be nice to take a little bit of them around, get some of that done. No other questions, no comments, no concerns? Okay. Very good. Thanks a lot. The next item nine point two is bylaw enforcement report for June. Has everybody had the opportunity to read it? Of course, Mr. Gil was not here. So if you have any questions, we can forward them to them. Go ahead, Councilor.
I just want to know how much longer is it going to go on for the public school? That is a nightmare.
Well, I don't know. I don't know what else you think we can do but have Pete on him steady. If he refuses to go, what do we chain him up and and bring drag him here?
Could not make fines on him?
Well, he doesn't pay his fines. What what are we gonna do? We don't know. We can try finding him.
Now, there's something else to have noticed in that place is there's a for sale sign in the window that's removable. That's what people are getting in and out.
That's been taken care of by.
That's taken care of.
Yeah, that's in the report here. I know I understand your frustration, but if he's just not cooperating with us, there's not a whole lot we can do. We try and try and try and other than drag him here by the hair, we nothing that we can do here. Hey, there's nothing like legally we can do here. We can try everything you want, but why? Why go with money after that? Go ahead, Matt.
Through your worship, Bob. As with any other property standards concern, every at least get an estimate and what that thing have to be and and start pretty speed to the fire and say, listen, you can go in and do it or we can do it for you and attach that to your taxes because we did ask that that by law in order to do so.
We can do it. We can do whatever you you people request us to do. We'll do whatever you require. And if if we do have to start beating it ourselves, it's going to be costly. And we put it on his taxes. We're taking a big, big chance of not getting payback on it. So.
It's a public safety concern that I'm worried about right now.
I am also.
And it's there like at this point. So.
Okay.
We're kind of stuck between a rock and a hard place.
We are.
Public school is.
We are.
If we could do that or at least get an idea as to what that would cost to clean up and then send him a notice with that, that would be.
Yeah, definitely get Pete to investigate that. Go we go from there. It's also frustrating for Pete too because he's chasing them down all the time and you put the fence up, you put the gate up, it comes down here. And barricade the windows, they they kick them out. But we're working at it. Trust me, it's not being ignored. Nope. Okay, anything else? Okay. For that part, okay municipal intern.
Sir, can I just, sorry?
Oh, sorry, sorry, one second.
Uh, going on reports, the animal control reports not here?
If you've read Steve, you'll see no animal report has not been turned in.
I just got a question. If we could get an answer on this is is she supposed to give us a report once a month or is it orderly? That's all I need to know because if we're paying for a service, I might get full service rendered.
Yeah, she's supposed to be giving us a monthly report, I believe, is what her contract states.
We send it to the school.
Yeah. Very good. Go ahead, Evan. You got the floor.
So uh, just another update on the the tech park. So we made a lot of progress this month, which we're pretty pretty happy about. Um, so the the first item on the agenda is what I guess is formerly the tennis courts now where we're going to update it to a traffic park. So I don't know if you guys have ever seen one of these, but essentially you know, there's kind of lines painted on the road. There's going to be those signs of the stuff and it's it's for kids. Um, the idea is for them to kind of learn the rules of the road on, you know, bikes or scooters or whatever they're riding. You know, it allows them to do so without being on a main street, you know, typically. It, you know, it's going to be designed for younger children. You probably don't want them out on the main roads. Uh, so right now we're just kind of waiting on quotes. Um, we're talking to a few different, you know, paving companies in the area, waiting on you know, quotes for the resurfacing, uh, getting quotes on the line painting. Uh, and then I don't know if any of you have seen, but we've taken down three fences that were previously there, just the lakeside fences remained up, but it's it's open now. And then the basketball nets are also just going to remain up. Uh, and then we're just adding new new chain nets for now. Uh, for the ball field, uh, the infield has been graded now. You know, it was getting pretty grassy, so we added some sand, graded it out. And we'll continue this throughout the summer. Hopefully that's a job. You know, maybe not the we'll see. I don't know if the students can do grading, but you know, hopefully they can kind of go down there, keep the the infield, the grass around the baseball field maintained. And then we've also added permanent bases to the infield for people to use. For mini putt, uh, it's been unlocked. It's just open for public use at this point. We're just leaving it as kind of a bring your own ball, bring your own putter situation. Because while we do have a few putters and balls to offer, unfortunately, um, you know, they'll just get stolen. We leave them out. So so those the items that we have right now are just for um they're for larger groups. Um, when larger groups come such as schools, we had some come at the end of the school year here. Uh, we'll give them a key. They can come in. They can use, uh, you know, the supplies that we have and then lock it back up and then and then just go on their way. Uh, and then one thing that we're looking to add, I'm still kind of waiting to to hear on on who's the best person to do this. Um, we're going to be adding bumpers along the side of all the mini pot holes. So a few have already been done. I don't know if you've seen, but uh, there's just kind of bricks along the side. We're hoping to just add those around the rest. Um, just so that, you know, when balls are flying all over the place, hopefully they stay within, you know, the parameters of the hole now. And then looking into replacing and updating some of the worn items on the course. A lot of the things that are down at the mini putt unfortunately, you know, have been left out during the winter. The elements have gotten to them. So they're getting a little bit old. So we're going to be looking into updating some of that as well. Uh, for the soccer nets, frames have been, you know, placed. There's new netting on them. People can use those. Uh, LED lighting. Uh, so we have thirty posts and lights that are going to be put up around the park. And so um, again, this kind of falls into the same. We're just kind of waiting on a like a quote from some of the the paving companies around the community on, you know, who's uh, what's the best price to get that done for us? Uh, for the outdoor exercise equipment in order has gone in with a company called Active Fit. Uh, for the community park package, uh, it's going to arrive in about four to six weeks and then we still have to install it, which will take another, you know, couple of weeks. Uh, this package comes with six units, uh, which have both statical stack equipment and machines. Uh, provides a variety of low, medium and high intensity exercise. And then this equipment is suitable for a multitude of users with a variety of different goals and abilities. So yeah, you know, certain things like we just have like pull up bars, which, you know, is just more static. And then you have other things kind of like a, I don't know what the official term is for, but it's like a biking machine, you know, you can just kind of sit on a chair and you can you can cycle on it. Um, and so then again, waiting on a quote or a twenty eight by twenty four cement pad to place this equipment on. Uh, a natural playground. So this is something that's going to go uh, adjacent to where the current playground area is. And uh, so this is going to be a natural playground for Rosie's Gardens. It's going to include things like log climbers, a balance beam, uh, small climbing rocks and a few other things. Um, so according to them, nature based playgrounds, uh, they mimic the natural world and can be comforting to children of all ages and abilities. So it's a little bit different than what we have now. Right now we have kind of industrialized equipment. So this is going to be something extra, uh, something new. A little bit different than what we have currently. Uh, for users comfort bleachers have been moved around the park, um, couple on each side of the soccer field and then some behind the ball damage. Oh, we have some bike racks that are hidden in some weeds right now. So we'll have to trim those weeds, take the bike racks out and we're going to move those bike racks uh, to a more accessible area. And then we're getting some quotes for some permanent sun shades to add. Right now we have those those tents, but we're looking for something um that can kind of stay up year round. The the shade itself would be taken down, but it's kind of these big metal posts that would be able to stay up um, all year round. And then uh, waiting on quotes again for paving for for a walking path and then signage, you know, anybody who provides anything if if, you know, they would like a sign up, um, that's something we'll be looking into and uh, you know, kind of you know, safety and and other things like that signage. So uh, so yeah, that's that's the update. Uh, any questions anybody has, feel free to feel free to ask.
No questions? Okay. Uh, we've had, thanks a lot, Evan. It's it's starting to look great down there and the staff is very well involved. Would you help me?
Yeah, yeah, no, it's 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 picking up for sure. This month, this month was good. And I mean, once we start hearing back from some of those those uh, you know, companies for the cement stuff and the paving, like things will really, really come together really fast. So yeah.
And the park is gaining momentum. There there's more and more users.
Yeah, yeah, for sure. I've we've already seen quite a few kids down there this summer, which I mean, uh, you know, it's good to see.
Unfortunately, we have experienced a little bit of vandalism. Hopefully our cameras will detect it a little closer next time and we'll be able to identify who the culprits are. And we'll go from there. Uh, I encourage anybody who wants to go have taken a trip down there, take a look and see what's going on. It's it's very, very interesting. It's very uplifting to see something being done finally in the park. That's about all I have on that. Okay. Other questions? Good. Okay. Be resolved that council accept the staff and committee reports as presented. A mover in the second, please. Matthew and Pat. Discussion's already been had. All in favor? Thank you. Okay, item ten. Items for council direction ten point one by law twenty twenty two dash sixteen amendment for users speed by law number twenty twenty fifth dash fifty to reflect administrative costs associated with tax registration files. Steve, can you give us a little bit of a update on that?
Yes, your worship. This here is an amendment to the bylaw of twenty twenty fifty is to incorporate the administrator costs with tax registration files. So this would be cost for your first warning letter, second warning letter, file preparation. Uh, registered letters as well for the process, file action, tender, opening and examination and payment to court. So this will incorporate, like I said, all administration costs.
Okay. Go ahead, Doug.
I need your worship. I need a little direction from you. Uh, I I just trying to get around the thought that this is showing administration rates for twenty twenty one, twenty twenty two, twenty twenty three. But it's an amendment to it. Were any of these in the original bylaw?
All right, we'll come to just a little check on that. But with the none of the costs as far as I aware with the tax registration files before.
Well, I'm just wondering, like, in in my world, when we pass a bylaw, it becomes effective once we passed it. And I can't see how we could make this retroactive to twenty twenty one or the first part of twenty twenty two. That kind of doesn't make a lot of sense to me.
No, we can do it then.
Yes, I appreciate that.
Yeah, yeah.
The other thing was, of course, uh, I think we're proposing it to be read a first, second and third time and finally adopt it. Could we make that a first and second time? And then have the third time at the next.
Followed constantly? Most definitely.
Thank you.
Yeah, anything like this is a it's not a problem.
Yeah, I'm just confused. I haven't seen anything quite like that before. So.
I read it, but I never really picked this. Thank you. Any other questions? Comments? Okay, Steve will look into that for us and get back to us on that. That will be the next week because you're still on vacation. Okay, ten point two discussion of fence regulations. Now, you've got a, I'm sure you you've got a little bit of a background on the on the fence thing.
Yes, your worship. What staff is looking for is a direction that council may want to go with fence regulations. Either create a full bylaw to protect the owners of privately owned outdoor swimming pools direct and maintain the fences or an amendment to the property standards by law two thousand nine dash zero zero three to include registrations on fencing around pools.
Okay, and the option, the the other option, the other consideration is go ahead, Joe, do that question.
I'd like to maybe amend it to existing by law. And going into a full fence by law, we could get into quite a bit of hot water with the the property lines and what we have around here.
Yeah.
So to make an amendment to basically follow the provincial standards is not?
For defense by law?
Or there is.
For pools, there is no provincial by law. Or provincial law on that. It goes within municipalities.
Okay, well, we made one just including pools just for the the safety of kids, really. Yep. Any other? Because if we do, hey, go ahead.
Yeah, I think making an amendment within our existing bylaws is the easiest way to go. Don't need to start all over again. It's just a small addition in there, but it's definitely needed.
That's council's desire. We'll come back with it next meeting. Okay, nothing else on? No. Okay, uh, discussion to adopt resolutions for the missing district, community safety and well being plan for funding allocations. Well, if I'm not mistaken, this was mandated by the province that your community has to have a well being, safety and well being plan.
Yes, your worship. It was mandated under the provinces Police Services Act. Municipalities to develop and adopt a community safety and well being plan. Municipalities had the option to plan individually or or to develop a joint plan in partnership with neighboring municipalities. So in February eighteen twenty twenty, council passed resolution number twenty twenty dash thirty three expressing interest in DSAF to take the lead role in administering and developing a district wide plan with the other twenty four municipalities. So all municipalities enter the district plan and an oversight of committee made up of representatives from DSAF, expecting health unit, must mean shores and Kirkland Lake was struck. So a presentation was made on May twenty six twenty twenty two to review and to review the draft plan and provide feedback in which included now the next steps. So we have to adopt adoption of the plan by each municipality by resolution. Publish plan within thirty days of adoption. That's on the website. Try to copy available to anyone who requests it. Approve in principle a contribution for plan resource based on appropriate net by DSAF and COBOL is at two point nine percent. Family will be selected to act as point of contact for the plan and develop of working groups. And DSAF is the lead until then and support the implementation of this plan. And therefore I included the plan into the agendas.
Okay. Are there any questions? So go ahead, Pat.
So much of this that I read sounds almost identical to what DSAF is supposed to be doing. And the health unit and the various other groups that we've got. Is this just going to make another group on top that's costing us? Like it doesn't seem to. I'm I'm not seeing anything new in here that isn't supposed to be covered by the all those other groups that were each municipality is funding.
Go ahead, Matt. Through your worship, uh, or to answer Counselor Anderson's question, it's a plan in place and and your your social services boards and your health units are actually partners in the plan as is each individual municipality. It's frameworks that we work within. I mean, the entities that you're speaking to all have roles to play within it. And our role would be to either adopt or reject the plan and then make support or deny support for a set plan. Um, and and it is something that needs to be implemented in the Police Services Act. So it's it's a plan and not necessarily an entity as as.
Need the cost system? A plan, a plan cost system?
Well, the fees associated go into the administrative costs to facilitate a plan and that is our portion. And it's each individual municipality that pays into it. And our our rate is two point nine percent. And it's actually within the table that.
Oh, yes. Yeah, I've read all that. Yeah.
And if we had to have put this together ourselves, it would have cost us a lot more than than what these ever charged us because there are other small municipalities that would have had a hard time, same as we would have had to to implement this to to get this done to start off with and then to implement. It's kind of a saving for having done it jointly, the municipalities district wide provide significant saving. Any more questions? Does that answer all your questions, Pat, or?
No, I see that. Yeah, I see what you're saying. It's just, I think we went through this with another group and I can't remember the the letters ago with it, you know, a few years ago. And they were supposed to sort of be an umbrella over all these things. And now we've got another umbrella. How many more umbrellas are we going to get? I just get frustrated with the number of extra things that we really don't see any uh, payback. Don't see any help coming back to our town. And that's that's where it gets me that we're constantly fighting and fighting for benefits for our town and and paying and not getting any.
If we inform people that it's there and they don't use it, there's not much we can do about it. But if we inform people and they do use it, then it's a win win situation. Okay, Doug?
I I'd just like to suggest that A, you know, we've been told to do it. Yeah, we're doing it.
Yeah.
B, I don't think umbrella organizations are a bad thing. I I think to Pat's point, the question of getting things implemented and contributing to the goals that we want to see established is probably more important. And on that basis, I was a little bit disappointed to see that it's fairly thinly funded and fairly thinly manned. I'm not too sure how effective it's going to be, but I I think it's a good idea. I think it's a great plan. Uh, I'm going to wish it well and I hope as it flourishes, uh, maybe we can see it become more effective and expand a little bit.
So learning curve for everyone involved, so.
Yes.
Okay. Well, thank you very much. Uh, ten point four, discussion on food bank request for renting former Dr. Jobs. Uh, we've got a letter here from Mrs. Mercier, who is the manager of the food bank. And they would like to take the old the whole building over. You spoke to Emily?
Uh, yes, your worship. What they're requesting is to have the front area as an office area for them and they would pay rent for that a reasonable rate. Um, only issue at this time is to get work done in that uh, area as Aaron pointed out earlier, trying to get a contractor in for any work right now. That's very difficult and very costly as well. We would have been compared to just even a year ago for billing supplies and his rates have gone up over twenty percent if not more.
What stage is that at right now? What does it need to be done?
Next word need to be complete over. Complete overhaul, including electrical plumbing.
Wall ceiling, ceiling will have to be done from one end to the other. Ventilation locks, heating. Let's go home. Yeah. Yeah, it's going to be a costly project. Yeah. The rent probably wouldn't take a long time to cancel that price. Yeah. Okay, just to keep everybody abreast of what's going on there anyways. And contractors right now are. At a demand. Unbelievable. Okay, items for council information. Be resolved that council accept the items for council direction and information as presented. The mover and securer please. Matthew and Pat. All in favor? Here we go. Other business, got a letter of gratitude from E S C S M, the bursary for academic awards to Alexei Klee. She will receive end of the hundred dollar award. I attended the, on the note, I attended the. Graduation at St. Pat's and. I forgot to name the young lady who won, but she's a gold, a gold ball girl. I'll have it for the next meeting. Sorry about that. My mistake. Item eleven point two, art colony visiting Cobalt. Pat, you want to give us a little bit more on that since you're. You're, you knew more about that than we did, so.
Well, the art colony, I have no idea how many years they, they've been visiting here every July.
Many, many, many.
Many, 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 certainly before I, they were doing it certainly before I ever came back in the, came here in the eighties. They're here for a week. They're painting in Cobalt. For the whole week. So you'll see them out around the town. They're based out of the Golden Age Club for the, for that week and. Artistically, it, it continues to put Cobalt on the map every year. Some of them are northern painters. Some of them are, you know, relatively local and others come from a long way to, to attend this. So it's just, I just wanted to alert everyone what the dates were so that if you see them out and around in the street, or if you've got the opportunity. Say at a lunchtime or first thing in the morning or later in the day to stop down the Golden Age and just welcome them to our community.
And I can, I can vote for the, the, Councilor Anderson. They do love it when people drop in to see them.
Oh, yes.
And they don't have a problem with you to throw or shoulder us to what they're doing. So a little bonus for our municipality.
That's right.
Okay, and I'm going to take this time. I want to thank Councilor Anderson for the fantastic job she did on Canada Day. Along with the assistance of Mr. Joey Ostemberg.
And Andy and her son.
For the parade I'm talking about. And Golden Age Club, I want to congratulate them for their work also and the fire department and the works for participating in the festivities.
And the sponsors. That, that we got for the, the water and the frisys.
Yeah. Okay, I don't know who they are, but. Even when we are, and thank you again, yeah. Very well. It was very nicely done. Now we're one of the only municipalities that's still put on parades, I guess. It's super.
What I liked when I, I, you know, we didn't have very many kids going in the parade. Oh, you know, coming out of COVID. But when we're going along the street and it was taking a look, all the kids are tiny. We have so many newborns, toddlers, preschoolers in the area. So this parade's going to grow back again as those kids grow. Tall enough to be able to go in the parade themselves. So I'm really looking, because the street was full of kids watching it. So it can grow back again.
It will. It will. Okay. Item twelve, outstanding business. We have a list of outstanding businesses. Anything anybody would like to ask questions about on that one? No? Okay, no closed session. Obviously no business arising from closed session. Adjournment. Be resolved that committee to hold meeting of council be adjourned at. Seven oh four P M. Moved by Doug. Second by Gary, Gary's going.
I always got to get it on.
All in favor? Thank you very much, folks. Thank you, Pete, for coming up, guys.